Good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's Monday, April eighteenth special meeting. I will now call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call the room?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Here.
Councilmember Gothols?
Here.
Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Pappen?
Here.
And Mayor Bonilla?
Here.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. I'm now going to read the reminder regarding these special health orders. Due to special health orders in place at this time, we are holding meetings remotely. Information on how to provide public comment is explained at the bottom of each published agenda. When public comment is announced for the item you wish to comment on, use the raise your hand feature in Zoom and you will be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, please press nine to raise your hand. And when called upon, press six to unmute. The options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for that specific item. So tonight, our first item under the study session is fiscal year mid-year budget for 2021-22. I believe we have our finance director to speak.
Good evening, Mayor Bonilla, members of the council, Rich Lee, the city's finance director. The item before you this evening is to first provide an update on the current fiscal year budget for the general fund, as well as provide a preview for next fiscal year's budget. But first, we'll start with the current fiscal year. This is the up-to-date picture for the general fund. For transactions through March of 2022, we are projecting revenues of $160.2 million and expenditures of $146.6 million. If these estimates come through to fruition, we believe that we'll end the fiscal year with $13.6 million to the good. I'm going to spend the next couple of slides talking about what has changed since the last major budget update from January. First, this should look fairly familiar to the council. These are metrics that are kind of outline the real estate industry in San Mateo. The blue bars going from left to right, that correspond to the secondary Y-axis on the right. That is the median sales price for a single-family home in the city of San Mateo. This data goes through Q1 of 2022, which reached a median sales price of over $2 million. The left line, that is the number of homes that are in the inventory for San Mateo. And the green line represents the number of homes that were sold for that particular quarter, both of these corresponding to the primary Y-axis on the left. The light blue line, that is the average days on the market. That is the number of days that elapsed from the time that the home is listed for sale until the time that it closes. And all of these indicate an industry that's performed well for the city. This graph shows the real property transfer tax over the last decade by month. For the current fiscal year, the March year-to-date is at nearly $10 million. The area inside the red rectangle is an estimate for the remainder of the fiscal year, and we believe it to be roughly another $6 million to end the year at $16 million. So looking at this from a more macro level, for the current fiscal year, we had an adopted budget of $8.5 million. The prior estimate from January was $13 million. Based on the year-to-date transactions, we believe that we will end the year at $16 million, so another $3 million in RPPT revenue for the city. The TOT revenue pre-pandemic, so this was fiscal year 1819, the city's general fund had recognized $7 million in TOT. During the low point of TOT, which was the first full fiscal year of COVID, we had less than $1 million in TOT. For the current fiscal year, we believe that we will end the year with $3 million. And I'll go over some metrics a little bit later in the presentation of the drivers behind how that performance has improved significantly, but namely, the average occupancy rate. So that means that, for example, if a hotel had 100 rooms, if 70 of those rooms were rented on any given night, they would have a 70% occupancy level. For the period of July 2021 through February of 2022, the city's hotels had an average occupancy of 60% and an average room rate of $100. So definitely performing better than the low point of last fiscal year. So looking at this from a budgetary perspective, we had budgeted $1 million in TOT. Based on the current estimate of $3 million, that's a favorable for performance of $2 million to the good. Within the context of these favorable general fund results, the proposed resolution at the city council regular meeting to follow commits $10 million of general fund unassigned fund balance. First, for $5.5 million of additional employee compensation costs for the general fund over the next two fiscal years related to bargaining units that agreed to concessions as a part of the city's fiscal sustainability plan. This was to provide the general fund with relief in response to the immediate and severe impact of COVID-19 on the general fund, namely, TOT and sales tax loss. We've completed negotiations with those units. And we're asking the council at the next meeting on the consent agenda to consider adopting a resolution to commit these funds for that purpose. The second of which is $4.5 million in additional support for our capital improvement plan. That includes $1.6 million to continue and nearing completion of the high-voltage streetlight conversion, $1.8 million for the Marina Library structural improvements, and $0.6 million in pedestrian mall improvements for the downtown area. Should the council adopt the resolution, this is the effect that it will have. So the beginning balance going from left, these are the fund balance types in the general fund, going from the top, which is the most constricted, down to the bottom, which is the least restricted. Going in the adjacent column to the right, that is our projected net gain for the year, so $13.6 million. With the council adoption of the resolution, that will commit that $10 million for labor negotiation costs as well as CIP support. And it will reduce the amount that would have gone into unassigned fund balance. So I want to pause right there before I move on to the preview for the next fiscal year to see if there's any questions from council.
Councilmembers, do I have any questions? Hearing none, Rich. I think we should move on.
Actually, I believe Councilmember Lee has a question.
Okay, let's go.
Thank you, Director Lee. I just had a question because I was interested in the comparison of the occupancy rate pre-pandemic, just as a baseline to compare what our occupancy rate is today. So I was just wondering if you knew offhand?
Anecdotally, that was around 10%, so it was quite low. And we have, the hotels definitely picked up their performance and to the city's benefit for TOT revenues.
And pre-pandemic?
Pre-pandemic, I don't have that data available. We recently made a change in our business practice where all of the TOT remittances are coming directly to the city and we have access to that kind of occupancy data. But I believe, you know, if the hotel stock stayed roughly the same, it was about 70%.
Okay, so we're only about 10% off from pre-pandemic, if that's the case?
We're fairly close. What has yet to recover is probably the room rate.
I see. Okay. Thank you. That's my question.
Thank you for the question. Okay, I'm going to move.
Any others? Okay, Rich. Let's go on.
Great. Thank you. So this is the preview for next fiscal year's budget. I'm going to spend a fair amount of time talking about our assumptions for the major tax revenues, as well as spend a little bit of time on the operating budget. So the high-level overview for next fiscal year will have total revenues of about $159 million and total expenditures of $165 million. So we're expecting about a $6 million loss. I'll go into the reasons for that over the next couple of slides. First, we'll talk about general fund revenues, and of course, we'll always start with property tax. We're expecting property tax to be about $79.6 million. As you can see, the majority of that comes from the secured current year property tax. Now, next fiscal year is a little bit of a one-off, I guess you could say it that way. The property tax in lieu of VLF is a little bit elevated. Normally, we would receive somewhere between $13 and $14 million in property tax in lieu of VLF. However, we should be receiving the shortfall, excuse me, from the prior fiscal year. So there was a countywide shortfall, as the council is well aware. That was $96.2 million countywide for last fiscal year. Our share of that is $7.5 million that we should have received last year. The county filed a claim with the state of California and all of these cities in San Mateo County on their behalf. And as of right now, it is in the state's proposed budget for 2023. So as long as that appropriation remains in the state's budget, we should receive those funds next fiscal year. So that's why VLF is a bit elevated than it normally is. Excess ERAF, we are projecting $7.8 million, and that represents 10% of total property tax revenues. A couple of things. First is, we're assuming a 5.6% growth in assessed value. So that means that that primarily applies to the secured current year, the property tax rule. Excess ERAF, it does not currently reflect the state's counterproposal. So the county and all the cities had proposed a legislative amendment related to the VLF shortfall that would have reduced the amount of time that the cities would have had to wait for that true-up, where right now, it's effectively a two-year period. The proposal was for there to be a one-year period with three years of true-up. The state's counterproposal would have a one-year period, but it would use excess ERAF as the funding source for that. So the proposed budget for next year does not assume that that counterproposal will be signed into law. We have yet to receive any updates from the state on the status of that counterproposal. Moving on to the city's second-most, I guess, number-two tax revenue source. This shows sales tax history from 2002 all the way to 2021. And that figure that's shown for 2022, that is an estimate and beyond. Those are all estimates from our sales tax consultant. First thing I wanted to point out is, you'll see that red arrow that is pointing out to the recovery during the Great Recession. So during the Great Recession, it took the city four and a half years from peak to trough to get back to that baseline sales tax mark. For the pandemic-driven recession, it's going to be roughly a little over a two-year period, so a much shorter recovery, and that's to the city's benefit. Just a couple of things to point out. First is, it's primarily comprised of the local 1%. So that's the Bradley-Burns, that's our share of the state's base sales tax rate. There's also a tiny component, Prop 172, that goes back to a half-cent sales tax from 1993 as a part of the Local Public Safety Protection and Improvement Act. And then moving on to real property transfer tax, council, this should look familiar as well. This shows the past 20 years of real property transfer tax revenues, again pointing out that the figure for 2022 is the current estimate for the current fiscal year. This shows on a more economic basis the average real property transfer tax for each of these economic cycles from the dot-com boom all the way to the current period of COVID-19. And this was justification for resetting that long-term assumption for real property transfer tax to the average between the more recent periods of $11.1 million. For transient occupancy tax, this shows, again, 20 years of history, reaching the low point in 2021 of under $1 million, and our estimate for next fiscal year, $3.2 million. We are assuming that the occupancy rate continues to recover, as well as the room rate. And we have a hotel coming back into stock, we believe, in the spring of 2023. So finally, in tonight's presentation, I'm going to go over some general fund expenditure assumptions. This is the breakdown by expenditure type. The majority, over 50%, coming from salaries and benefits. And for a municipality, you know, that is our primary charge, our providing service to the San Mateo community. So it makes sense that a majority of our operating budget is for salaries and benefits. But really, the drivers behind the increases to general fund expenditures. First, of course, these are the negotiated employee compensation increases. If you think back a few slides, that was the $5.5 million over the next two fiscal years of additional general fund costs. And these are really the city's partnership with those bargaining entities that had agreed to concessions as a part of the fiscal sustainability plan to provide that relief to the general fund. The second is healthcare costs. So the healthcare costs, as of January of this year, and that's when healthcare costs changed, the cost at which, it was 5.3%. For 2023, our projection is a 6.75% increase. Councilmember Lee had asked about this before. The total cost for the general fund, I should say total cost for healthcare, so that's medical, dental, and vision, for 2023 is $10.5 million. The general fund's share of that is $7.1 million, compared to the current fiscal year where we had budgeted $9.9 million in total healthcare costs, and the general fund's share is $6.8 million. The third and final primary driver behind increases in the general fund expenditures is transfers out. And really, this is needed to ensure that the city's infrastructure is maintained in a timely manner. Highlighted, these three that are kind of driving the additional transfers out, of course, completion of that high-voltage streetlight conversion, the much-needed structural improvements at our Marina Library, and then the Phase One of the downtown for our pedestrian mall. So that ends my presentation. Happy to answer any questions from the council.
Thank you very much, Rich. Any questions? None? This is a study session. We'll go to the public for public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any public commenters?
Mr. Mayor, I'm checking. I do not have any hands raised at this time.
Thank you very much. Closing public comment.
Oh, wait. I'm sorry. One moment if Rich hedges.
Okay.
All right, since there was a lot of questions, I thought I'd take the time to compliment Rich Lee on what a great presentation he made. Very understandable. Really appreciate it. Thanks, Rich. That's it.
Thank you very much, Rich.
Thank you.
Thank you. Back to the council. Any final thoughts for Rich? I'd like to start by saying, Rich, I think that, you know, we have, I think you've led us really fairly well between you and our city manager, Drew, through what's been a tough time. I think we've made a few smart maneuvers. I'm happy to see the property taxes coming back up, although I know you didn't do that, but still, it's looking good right now. And the other end of that is it means it's harder for people to buy a place here because things are selling for more. But anyway, any other comments? Okay, Councilwoman Lee?
So nice to have compliments from the public. And I just wanted to acknowledge that I really appreciate the good work of Director Lee as well. And I'm the city manager, and I feel like this increase in the investment back to our people who are really the machine behind the organization, and then also the capital improvement projects where our community members will see and experience directly the benefits of those investments. I feel really confident that we're putting our money in the right places. And so I'm very pleased to see this, you know, this decision come before us, and I strongly support it. So, do we need to make a motion?
No, this is a study session. No motions. Thank you. So I guess that's it, Rich. Complimentary. Thank you very much. Drew, thank you very much. On to the next item, which is the Clean Water Program. I think we'll have the Director of Public Works, Azalea Mitch, here talking about the council's requested thoughts on water reuse.
Ray, hello, councilmembers. Can you see my screen?
I can.
All right, and then let me.
Yeah, I think.
There's a little delay.
You are, yeah. I got you.
So do you see the?
I'm seeing the artist conception of the plant is the covers line.
Okay, great. There we go. Can you see the agenda?
Yes, thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. All right, well, councilmembers, Azalea Mitch, Director of Public Works, this evening I will be discussing with you the city's water reuse efforts. We will discuss the role of wastewater, overview of the types of water reuse, as well as the options that we have to offset drinking water demand and the next steps on this great effort. As you all know, we have been experiencing ongoing drought conditions, and there's definitely a need to conserve. April is Water Conservation Month, but there also is the need for us to explore alternative water supply sources. Recycled water is a viable option for a local water supply, and it is a stable and safe resource. So as a city, we operate a sewer utility that serves a population of approximately 150,000. Through the sewer collection system, we receive flow from the town of Hillsborough, Crystal Springs County Sanitation District, sections of San Mateo County, the city of Belmont, as well as wastewater from the city of Foster City, and of course, the residents of the city of San Mateo. The treatment plant is co-owned with Foster City. They own approximately 25%. And on average, we treat 10 million gallons a day of water that is treated and discharged to San Francisco Bay. So what exactly is water reuse? This is the process of treating wastewater for a designated beneficial freshwater purpose. Water reuse can be either non-potable or potable. It can meet those two standards. Non-potable uses include irrigation, industrial uses such as cooling tower makeup and boiler feed, as well as toilet flushing in dual-plum buildings. With respect to potable, through advanced processing, wastewater can be treated further to meet water quality standards that allow for either indirect or direct potable reuse. The city, we currently do not produce recycled water, but once the expansion project at the treatment plant is completed, we will. So the city, over the past few years, has been actively engaged in evaluating the recycled water options that we can achieve at the treatment plant for both potable and non-potable. In 2017, we worked on the development of a recycled water facilities plan that assess the non-potable demand in both the San Mateo and in Foster City. Based on that study, it was estimated that large irrigation users such as parks and schools throughout the city have a demand of .9 million gallons a day. As you can see from this figure, the demand is spread throughout the city. The assessment was comprehensive. The areas northeast of 101 and 92, those closest to the treatment plant, the demand there was estimated to be rather low, .1 million gallons a day. Larger demands on the other side of 101. And you can see by the dots, the larger users. It's important to note that in this assessment, the golf courses were not included because they currently use well water. So to solve the, to serve the large irrigation users, we would need a purple pipe system that would include pumping, storage, and the pipes themselves to reach all these large irrigation users and meet that demand. So while we are, as a city, a sewer utility, it is actually the California Water Service Company, CalWater, that is the drinking water purveyor in the area. They, like Foster City, Foster City is both a wastewater and a drinking water utility. CalWater does hold the rights to serve the area and meet any recycled water demands. They have the responsibility of assessing that demand and actually distributing that recycled water to their customers. Agencies such as the city sewer utilities, we have the role of producing that recycled water and connect this wholesalers to the water purveyors. The 2017 study that we did estimated that the capital costs required to build a system to meet that .9 MGB demand would cost around $39 million. This assessment, however, did not include the cost for building additional treatment. So at the treatment plant, we have an issue of salinity. Basically, during the summertime, the salinity levels double. And so for us to be able to produce a non-potable water that is usable, additional treatment would be required. And those costs are not included in that 2017 assessment. So what other options do we have? That really focuses on potable reuse as opposed to non-potable. With advanced processing, our wastewater can be treated to meet drinking water standards. And there are different types of options for potable reuse. Indirect potable reuse involves the treatment of wastewater effluents. So that's already been through tertiary treatment, through an advanced purification facility, and discharging into the groundwater basin, where that recharge can be then later used for reuse. So this groundwater replenishment practice has been used in California for many decades, primarily to hold off seawater intrusion. That has been the practice in Orange County. The Water Factory 21 is one of the facilities that has been in service for decades. That facility is now providing 35 million gallons a day for seawater intrusion and also for groundwater replenishment. So that groundwater is being used for potable. Monterey One Water is another facility near us that just got commissioned last year, and they are currently producing 5 million gallons a day. And to the south of Santa Clara, that water is in the process of planning a 40-MGB project. Another form of indirect potable reuse is reservoir water augmentation, which involves taking treated effluent, treating that further through a purification facility, and discharging it to a reservoir. That water is then, has a residence time, and then is treated again through a drinking water treatment facility. The city of San Diego is actually the eighth-largest city in California, and they are currently in the process of developing a reservoir water augmentation project. San Diego relies on importing 85% of their water supply, and their project will be commissioned in the next few years. They will be treating and augmenting the reservoirs with 30 million gallons a day, and their plans are to expand that facility to 83 by 2035. So they will be the first city in California to follow this process. And the last form of potable reuse is direct. This is actually treated drinking water augmentation, which involves, once again, the advanced treatment, but without the use of that environmental buffer, either the groundwater basin or reservoir, and introducing that recycled water directly into a public drinking water distribution system. Now, this system is currently, there are no standards currently for treated drinking water augmentation. Actually, the state water board's Division of Drinking Water is in the process of developing those standards, which we believe will be released in the next few years. So for San Mateo, what have we been doing? So we actually have been evaluating potable reuse opportunities for the use of the city's wastewater as part of the Potable Reuse Exploratory Plan, our PREP project, with the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission, Silicon Valley Clean Water, Redwood City CalWater, and the Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency, BASCA. We have focused on the development of both indirect reservoir water augmentation, which would take treated wastewater to SFPUC's Crystal Springs Reservoir. And we have also been evaluating direct treated drinking water augmentation. Just a few months ago, as we were wrapping up the third phase, SFPUC, which serves the 2.7 million people in the area, and they're the wholesaler of drinking water in the region, expressed the desire to actually take the study further and develop CECL-ready documents by July 2023. So we, all the parties here, we supported the recommendation to proceed with a new San Francisco Peninsula Regional Pure Water Project. And this will focus on producing 12 million gallons a day of potable water, which represents about 6% of SFPUC. about 6% of SFPUC's water supply. This project will focus both on indirect and direct potable reuse. Our pure water project would take eight MGD of treated wastewater from San Mateo, eight MGD from Silicon Valley Clean Water. The wastewater would go through an advanced water purification facility and produce 6 million gallons a day or more of water suitable for reservoir water augmentation and supply Crystal Springs Reservoir. That would be Phase One. As part of Phase Two, the facility, the purification facility would also allow for that expansion so that six additional MGD could be introduced directly into the drinking water distribution system for Redwood City, Cow Water, and possibly the Mid-Penn Water So as you can see, the, the efforts here are not inexpensive. The project to produce the 12 MGD of potable water is currently estimated at 700 million and would require about $20 million to operate. On a unit cost basis, that's $8 a CCF. For comparison, that's about twice the amount that water purveyors purchase from San Francisco and about the, you know, comparable to what Cow Water sells drinking water to San Mateo's So it's important to note that a regional project of this scale would, would require a lot of collaboration and a successful implementation would require that we have agreement on our respective roles. Also, who would be the project sponsor responsible for planning and developing the project? Who will lead this, be the champion? And who holds the financial responsibility? These have all been questions that we've been asking as part of this group. And recently, the SFPUC has shared that they would be willing to be that project sponsor and take this project to its next phase. Potential timeline, so our exploration phases are complete. We just wrapped up the third phase, which led to the recommendation of this project. Years four, one through four, we are currently, the next step is to develop the preliminary engineering, assess the environmental piece, develop an independent advisory panel, which has been the standard for potable reuse projects, develop the out, public outreach strategy, and also really engage on that, those institutional conversations and the purchase agreements. We estimate that that process in itself would take one to four years. Years five through eight would be assessing and allocating the funding through either, you know, state revolving fund loads or federal funding, and then taking the preliminary design to final design and beginning the construction permitting. Part of this would also involve a demonstration project, that means a pilot. If you are familiar with what Valley Water is doing, they currently have a 1 million gallons a day demonstration project that is currently producing purified water. And then the final stage would be construction, which would occur nine to 12 years from now, depending on the institute, overcoming the institutional challenges and acquiring the funding needed to take this project forward. So our next steps, we will be coming to you all with a memorandum of understanding so that we can fund the preliminary engineering. That effort is estimated to be around $1 million and we've been asked to contribute about $100,000 for that study. So we will be coming back in the next few months and that has been included in, in the proposed budget that we will request adoption for in the next month. We will also develop documents so that this, this project can be ready for, for the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation funding as well as an SRF loan. And then we will see how this goes. So with that, I thank you and we'll take any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much, Azalea. So now I bring it back to the council for questions. I see Councilmember Gothols.
Azalea, I, I am not sure you could tell, but I could barely contain myself during your presentation. I was so excited. I, I'm just thrilled to see this moving forward. The meetings that we've had in the past about this going back, gosh, 10 years, I think, with Mr., with Mayor Benia and myself, trying to turn this into a reality. It feels like it has finally turned the corner where people actually believe us that this is really going to happen. One of the things that I, I think you may have mentioned, but I wanted to bring it out again, is the purple pipe system. What would a purple pipe system cost to build and implement? It was a big number.
It is. So to, and the perp, there are two things. The purple pipe system would really be to offset those non-potable uses such as irrigation. And back in 2017, that estimate was at $39 million. Now, because of the salinity issues, that doesn't reflect one current dollar numbers and also additional treatment. Now, we also, you know, Cow Water may not necessarily think this is the most cost-effective approach because of the low demand and high price tag on the purple pipe system.
But $39 million sounds like pennies. It doesn't sound like nearly an appropriate cost estimate for what a purple pipe system would actually cost to implement and it would be so limited as opposed to a pure water program that needs no infrastructure. You make the pure water and you've all of a sudden created a whole new source of 10 million gallons of pure water a day that you can immediately put into the, the system. It feels like it pays for itself and especially when the potable plant can be amortized over a, a number of years to, to pay for what it would cost. It just feels like we need this, we need it now. Any opportunities? Do you see any opportunities to speed this up a little bit? I, I appreciate how much thought has gone into what this will take and I see all of the barriers that you have identified that need to be overcome. If, if the state passes their regulatory framework and if the, the drought conditions get worse and if the public outreach is very positive, do you think that we could speed this up with the help of SFPUC and things like that?
Well, I can, I can definitely say that we are in a much better position now than we were a few years ago because so many other agencies are currently doing. You know, the fact that the city of San Diego, a, a very large city in California, is in the process, they will be commissioning their facilities in the next two years is, I think, a big deal.
You're holding back your excitement. I'm having trouble holding my excitement back, but you're holding it back very well.
I'm, I'm, I tend to control myself, as you will tell you. But one, the, I, I can share with you that a few months ago, so we did this institutional study and the conclusions of that study, which were, that phase was completed a few years ago, there was no clear champion. It seems to me that, that leader, that project sponsor, that we are really, really close and obviously no purchase agreements have been signed and we don't, we don't have the institutional framework, but there was no champion a few years ago, whereas now we believe there is. So I think we're in my, in a much better situation and SFPUC is very eager to get the preliminary design done so that we can, next year, it's a very aggressive schedule to, to complete the preliminary engineering, but that was not there last year. So I think we have an opportunity here to keep this moving.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the presentation and thank you for answering my questions. I'll have a few more comments at the end.
Thank you very much. I see Deputy Mayor Papen with her hand up.
Well, Lord knows it couldn't come soon enough. So thank you so much, Azalea, for the, the presentation. I totally concur with Councilmember Gothols that this, this is really exciting stuff. My question to you is a structural one. Is SFPUC is going to be the champion? You know, there are rights that will probably come with that. So do you foresee that we would always be in a wholesaler position?
So, so agreements can take many forms. So we don't know and that, that would be, there are different frameworks and the institutional assessment does sort of lay out a, a very, sort of, you know, those challenges that then we have to discuss and agree to. So I would say that, that everything is on the, on the table in terms of the kinds of role that we as a city would take, the role that the water purveyors can take and SFPUC's role. And I, I have to say that there's, like I said, expressed interest, but the, the details are, all need to be worked out and, and roles won't be clear until those institutional agreements are signed.
Okay, okay. Yeah, because you know, we have been, the suburban water users have certainly been at the mercy of SFPUC since the beginning of time immemorial and that's not a bad thing, but that's why BASCA was created. And so I was just wondering if in fact, we are paying to create potable water, what's our share and how would that work? Because obviously we incur the expense to do it. So, but I, we'll, we'll wait. I, I recognize that the structure isn't fully formulated, but it's nice to see that this is something that's being fully explored, especially given the situation that we're in right now with recurring droughts. So thank you so much for the exciting update.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. Any other council members? Any questions? Okay, seeing none, I don't have any either right now. We'll go straight on to the public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments?
If you'd like to make a comment, please raise your hand. And Mr. Mayor, at this time, there are no hands raised. Oh, no, there is.
Okay. Drew? Drew, please go ahead. Unmute yourself.
Hello, apologize for the delay. I was expecting some other council members to speak for a minute. Needed to shift gears. So I had one question, and I may not get all the terms right, but if, in general, it seems like maybe this joint project with Silicon Valley Clean Water, there'd have to be piping run between the plants to new treatment plant, things like that. And I'm wondering in that context, if there's the ability to do a hybrid, a little bit solution? It wouldn't be a lot of volume of purple pipe, but if we're digging up miles of whatever to round the big pipe for the majority of the water, is there ability to basically at the same time route a purple pipe to any uses that, for landscaping or things along the way that are a reasonable distance away from that primary use, so to speak? Since construction cost is big, but adding a second pipe at the same time is relatively speaking, not that expensive. So I just was wondering a hybrid kind of approach in the, in that context of that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Drew. And seeing no other commenters, then I will close public comment at this time and just let you know, Drew, that as you know, we don't comment under public comment. However, if staff feels as though they would like to respond somehow, we'd be open to that. I'm not seeing any hands popping up for that. So Drew, I think that's one of those infrastructure questions we'll have to wait for. It's going to work itself out as time goes by. Okay, back to the council for any final comments.
I'll echo what Diane said about working with San Francisco. I, I look forward to hashing out the details in a way that asserts the interests of the peninsula. I'd hate to see us get strong-armed into different platform heights or something terrible like that. So, but this is just a wonderful, wonderful thing. I, I think there's no other way to just create 10 million gallons per day out of thin air and this is the way to do it. The general public is ready and I think the approach, the approach that Azalea has laid out is absolutely fantastic and makes me so excited. So thank you so much, Azalea.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Papen, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. I just have one question. Is it possible to get some grant money for some of the, our expenses that we might be putting towards this? Do you know, Director Mitch?
So there, there is a lot that is actually going toward recycled water and because of how pressed we have been, we haven't actually assessed the grant funding, but we are, we will definitely do so for, that's what this document will do. The CECL-ready doc, documentation will set us up for, for funding on, on the federal front as well as the state.
Thank you very much. And I, seeing no other council members with comments, I'd like to mention, I did recently see Deputy Mayor Papen with her water conservation ad on the internet, as well as I know I have one up. Other councils may have some up too. Everybody, please be as considerate as you can of our water use because we are once again in a drought. It's a continuing drought. California is in fact a drought-ridden state. Several years ago, the city council decided that the city hall should remove its own lawn and put in all of that beautiful foliage you see out in front, which is all California drought-resistant, living on drip irrigation. Please follow our model. Okay, with that said, I will ask, do you have everything you need, Azalea?
Absolutely, and thank you for the comments and feedback.
Thank you very much. Okay, with that, we're going to adjourn this meeting right now. We'll be back at 7:00 PM with the regular city council meeting. Thank you all very much. Have a good night.